This is Committee the whole meeting, October 29th. Approval of agenda, is there any additions to the agenda? Haven't heard none, anybody approve?
Someone move.
Move and second the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Conflict of interests declaration, anybody have a conflict of interest around the table? Nope, having heard none, we'll continue on to number three. Business arising from the minutes, the attachment with three pages. I think CAO Muse, you heard a few things to highlight.
I did. Mr. Chair, first municipal boundary review. So that work is ongoing, I fully expect that the instruction the council has given to this, to staff to come up with a revised nine for consideration will be brought to you on the November 12th meeting, which is the next regular council meeting. With our return of our esteemed deputy clerk, I fully expect that to happen in good order. And I'd like to welcome Chris Frotten back, back to the fold. He was away for a while, it was, I guess it was almost eight weeks, it felt like eight years. And we welcome him back and look forward to working close with our deputy clerk again. So that's an update on that. Municipal administration building, you've asked staff to go and collect information, most of it is collected. I'll highlight what we have done and what we will be doing for you. The first piece is to, we identified the new administrative buildings that had been constructed in the past five years, felt like that was a good, a good place to start if we're going to do a road tour, we should at least know what's out there. So we had identified Port Hawksbury, Richemont, St. Mary's, which was a Green Globe standard building, Antigone County Municipality of Yarmouth, and New Minas. Those were identified by our municipal advisors as being recently built. We are, we have virtually completed our assessment of the 2009 report, which identified the deficiencies of this, of this building. So we conferred with our public works director around, around doing substantial renovations of this building and what kind of impact it would have on, on code. Because as you're, as you know, a lot of the code requirements are grandfathered in this building. So if we're to do substantial renovations to this building, that would open up a requirement, depending on what we do, may open a requirement to, to actually fulfill the new code requirements. One of the big challenges would be the downstairs roof. It is not high enough to meet, to meet the standard. So it would be appropriate to use, if in fact we had to comply to the new rules around, around that, we would probably not be able to accommodate any staff in the basement. Which means we could still use the basement, we could still use it as a storage facility, but you could not, you could not have people working downstairs if we, if we did not meet that, that code requirement. So that's kind of a simplified version of, of some of the, some of the issues surrounding that. We did look at some of the prices around the retrofit of this building to meet code. And our early assessment would be that, well, in 2009, that number amounted to about $730,000. A full report will come to you, by the way, I'm just, I'm throwing numbers here, I'm not expecting you to remember all these numbers, a full report will be coming to you. But 730, $720,000, of course inflation would have to factor in. And so, so there's, and that would be to, to address the accessibility issues and to assess the other code-related issues. It would not provide us with any additional space, that would be just a fix, just to bring it up to, to standard. So, so of course, our, our analysis continues, we're really still in the preliminary stages of that, of the full analysis. But we will be providing you a report and updates as we, as we crunch the numbers and give you a little bit better idea of what, what it might look like. Also, we, we did approach a local contractor for, for very high-level thoughts around construction versus retrofit. Really, that was kind of an informal conversation, so that, I think we'll be following that up a bit more formally around, you know, some of the deficiencies that they would see in this building and some of the opportunities perhaps that we have with this building that they, they could see that perhaps we, your engineers, may not, may not see. And also updating you on the Eelbrook Fire Department Subcommittee, we've not been contacted yet by Eelbrook to have that meeting, and I think that, that, I think that's part and parcel of a decision around, around the municipal administration building and understanding what our options are moving forward. So I, I think that it's probably, not, not hearing from them, I'm, I'm not sure what that means, maybe they're not ready to meet, but I think maybe we should, we should contact the fire department to see how they, where they're at with this and whether we should start that discussion. So that's a verbal update on where we are, a formal report will come to you, and I'm hoping that would be at the next meeting as well.
All right, anybody have questions, Councilor Saret?
A couple of questions, or CAO, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer me or not. So is it, from the Eelbrook perspective, is, was there, is there indication from their end, from what you're understanding, that they are or are not interested in doing something? I mean, maybe it's twofold, they're planning on building a fire hall, but it could be, they might be interested to work with us. That's where you think the discussion may go, or is that the ask?
I think, I think what Eelbrook was looking for from the municipality is, first and foremost, that the Public Works Department would assist them in any sort of planning and preparation for a new fire hall. I think that was our initial conversations. And then, you know, in, in the initial meeting, and this was, this was not a meeting of council, this was, this was a meeting, two volunteers coming into my office and having a conversation around it, and I asked them the question. I said, "Well, you know, there's, we've been planning an administration building, or looking at our options for an administration building, we're in very preliminary stages of that. You're in the very preliminary stages of your building, should we not be having a conversation around whether or not that's something that we can work together on?" And I didn't receive an answer to that, but I think what I, what the answer was, well, we should, we should think about it and make the, and create the committee, because clearly I'm not in the position to, to effectively, to handle that, right? So, so that was the, the reason for the creation of the Subcommittee. In terms of what they want out of a building, and whether they want to work with us in order to maybe, you know, consider one building for both, I honestly don't have an answer to that question. And I think that would be the purpose of the meetings.
And the second question is, if I could, Deputy Warden, was the, if the, let's go to this building here, as far as codes, if you don't touch this building at all and you only put an addition on the end, let's say that was what comes out of the, could come out of the report.
Right.
Would this still have to come to code or you don't? Do you know that answer?
Well, I hate to give you a definitive answer on that one.
Okay, no.
I, I think that, I think the answer is, it, it may be okay.
Yeah, you're not sure.
Right, but I mean, depends, depends on what you're actually adding, like if you're, I think if you're impacting the basement, for example. You'd probably have to do the whole basement to code, for example. And, and really like, you know, around the code itself, I mean, those are really good questions, and I think that we should bring, we should bring those questions to John and maybe have John at the next meeting of council, because he would be much better suited to answer those, those questions.
That's very fair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anybody else? Just wanted to add, I know the, the UNSM is coming up next weekend, so if you guys happen to, I'm not going, but Port Hawksbury, Richmond, St. Mary's, Antigone, Yarmouth, we know, New Minas, might be a good chance to chat with them and ask them about the new building and process and all that stuff, so, all right.
Next month, later on in the month, I'm going to Eel Madam for a meeting, and I'll probably stop in Port Hawksbury and have a look. I'm sure I can find time to have a look there and maybe take pictures or something, I'll be driving right by.
As a, as a note, I just, and I, and I never mentioned this, what we'll be doing with those, with those organizations is, we're going to be asking them, we'll be asking them the same, we're going to prepare a list of questions and send them to each of these organizations. I think all of them, I'm, I'm sure are very proud of their building, all of them will be happy to take pictures and, and kind of go through their, their thinking processes, and I think that's an important thing to, you know, because they've made mistakes and they learn from them, and they're, they're always happy to share the successes and maybe shortcomings of those kind of projects. There was only one other item there in the business arising that I, that I want to address with council, there are other businesses, smaller businesses arising that haven't been resolved yet, but the one was the sidewalks. We had a discussion around sidewalks, and Greg Newell, probably three days after the meeting, came to see, came to see me and hand-delivered the policies that I will be copying to you. And there's sidewalk policies and procedures around, and so what, essentially what it, what it is, is the policy says, you know, under which conditions that they would accept this kind of construction, but there's also, there's also design, there's a design standard that you, you must meet in the sidewalk policy. What he also gave me was the active transportation, or sorry, trail policy. So a trail, you know, how we define trail and how we understand trail to be, I think we all think about the rails to trails, and it's a dirt, kind of a dirt path, well, that's not necessarily what it is. And so I was really encouraged by some of the designs that are, that are actually an option for us in our communities, and it's a much smaller footprint, it's, it's a smaller, and I think you may have seen these and noticed these in, in, in maybe rural communities, but not thought twice of it, like it's a sidewalk, but it's actually a trail. And so these trails are sometimes paved or concrete, so they're not necessarily dirt, although they can be. And they're about half the cost of the high-standard sidewalks that we always talk about, right? So where we always quote $1,000 a square meter, right, a million bucks a kilometer, well, these trail designs, depending on which one you choose, could be half of that cost. So you're, you're starting to get into the business of, oh, well, this might be interesting financially, so, and what he strongly encouraged, and I strongly encourage this group to do, is to, to maybe put on, on our priority list over the next six to 12 months, an active transportation strategy. And what an active transportation strategy allows you to do is to look at your communities and, and identify which communities are in need of active transportation, what does that look like? How does it connect to other active transportation routes? Can you make it a circle? Can you, can you connect communities if you were to put a trail on a road, for example, and attach it to a rail to trail? There are a variety of, of things that we could be assessing, and that would in fact identify priorities for your community, if that's in fact your interest to invest in your communities in this way. So there is, obviously, I made it clear that the gas tax is eligible for this kind of expense, and it's entirely up to you whether or not you want to utilize the gas tax for that purpose versus another purpose. And so that's my update for now on the sidewalks, I thought that was kind of encouraging, that financially was a bit less expensive than we had first analyzed, still expensive, but obviously this is, if this is a priority of this council, it would be a multi-year strategy to, to address. And there's a variety of ways that that can be done. So that's, that's my update. I'll give you a copy of the policy so that you can look at what they, what they are, and then from, when we get into capital planning, I would suggest that this should stay on our priority list and we should have a discussion around that. And I, just, and I'll finish with, that the active transportation strategy has been identified as, as a strategic initiative, a strategic priority over the next five years. So it is, it is a strategic initiative that we will do in our recreation department, but I think it's, it's important to understand that, that, that while it's a document, it could actually drive your decision-making around whether or not communities should have an improved active transportation, and that might be a sidewalk or a trail. Okay?
Okay, no questions? All right, we'll move on to, that's, we'll move on to number four, financial report. And again, CAO Muse, that'll be yours.
I'm going to stay fairly high level, seeing as we're, we're in the six-month period, we're still, we're halfway through the year. I'll focus on the first three pages of the report, which is, which is the summary. Right now, we're projecting, excuse me, a surplus of $204,000 for the year, again, that's a projection. It's part of the reason why we're projecting a surplus right now, most of the reasons are surrounding timing around some of the expenditures. One of the big expenditures that we planned that, that has not yet come to pass, I'm just trying to find it on here, is, is the tennis court retrofit, that was a fairly large number. We, we've estimated an amount for the year, but we suspect that we won't get to spend the full amount before the end of the year because of the timing around winter and some of the work that needs to be done around asphalt and the reliability around suppliers in that, in that domain. We will be dealing with the smaller tennis courts this year, the ones that don't require asphalt replacement. Those that require patching and resurfacing, we will commit to do before the end of the fiscal. So, so, and, and we fully expect that to move fairly quickly once the lease agreements are signed. Another area that I, I'm always underestimating somewhat on purpose, and is the deed transfer tax, we're showing $30,000 over, over what we were predicting would happen for the year. That's an, I mean, we've always been conservative in that estimate for, and, and so we've always, we've always lowballed that number and, and offset that assumption with a transfer from reserve. I prefer to do that than, than have it the other way around, where we have to go into reserves because we thought we were going to make this much and we actually didn't. It's one of the taxes that, that isn't as predictable as the other tax revenues. So for, for the most part, that's, that's the, the biggest variance from a revenue perspective. From an expense perspective, the, the variances are pretty much all over the place. In, in some cases, it's just a matter of, of that particular expense not occurring yet. So I don't expect that at the end of the year, that the surplus will be 204, although I've said that before and been wrong. Again, this is a projection at this point in time in the year. There are areas that I know we will be saving money compared to what we budgeted. One is the REN. The REN is, we predicted that it would be essentially three-quarters of a year worth of expenses, it will be much less than that. It will probably be between $6,000 and $8,000 for the year. And, and so, so that, and I think, I think I had estimated that number to be closer to 50. And so, so that's a, that's a fairly big, big difference. Also, another area that we haven't spent as quickly as I, as, as we predicted, I guess, is in economic development initiatives for Argyle, we had put aside a fairly aggressive number. We will be spending some of that, but I don't think that we'll be spending the entire amount. And sometimes what we do, instead of actually investing it directly, we look at our partners to see if there's any provincial or federal money that we can leverage. So that might in fact further reduce that number, assuming we can be successful in that, in that endeavor. There are, there are no areas of concern in terms of being significantly over or over budget at this time. Some, there are some negative numbers as they stand right now. The sewer collection and disposal in West Pumnico will be slightly higher than we predicted, but that will probably be offset by a reduction in a transfer to our reserves, so that will likely offset itself. And other areas, fire protection is showing that it's spent a little bit faster than, than predicted, and that is quite normal, because a lot of the training is done in the first six months of the year. So the training expense is usually higher than, than what, what is budgeted for six months, but then there's no training for a period of time, so that usually catches up. The, the firemen have always been very respectful of, of our training budgets and have typically stayed within that number. The other numbers worth highlighting would be garbage collection and disposal, we typically assume that number to be more, we, we assume a bit of the worst-case scenario in that area, so right now, we're, we're showing a $14,000 surplus, and I expect that at the end of the year, what is actually spent and what we budgeted, we will have savings there. We typically do, in fact, every year, we, we're fairly aggressive in, in kind of assuming the worst-case scenario there to make sure that we're protected. That's the extent of, I guess, the highlighted areas, unless there were questions around certain areas. That's where we stand currently, certainly, you know, always good to be in a surplus position, but there's also a balance between surplus position and actually doing what you said you were going to do in the budget. So some of the surplus is due, due to timing and not, and not, not any other reason.
Okay, questions, Councilor Saret?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Just, maybe you've answered this already, the, on the revenue side, the non-rate revenue, $41,000 roughly, does that, this on page three, does that mean, is that the total of all your surplus in revenue?
Page three?
I believe it was, maybe I'm wrong, you rolled on, non-rate, non-rate revenue.
Oh, page one at the bottom.
Yes, okay, page one at the bottom, I'm sorry.
Right, non-rate revenue is...
$1,000, that's a...
Right, that includes, the, the non-rate revenue is actually a collection of every revenue line item above it, that doesn't relate to taxes. So the $41,000 is actually, it, most of that is your deed transfer tax that I was referring to.
That all adds up to make that total?
Correct, so, so there's, exactly, so, so there's total revenues, and then so what this report shows is, is also the non-rate revenue amount, which is like grants in lieu of taxes, deed transfer, like which aren't rated with your residential and commercial rate.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for CAO Muse?
I had a couple more, but I thought, maybe somebody would...
All right, sorry? No, go ahead. Go ahead. You have, you have the floor, Councilor Saret.
Thank you. I'd just like to find out that council expenses, the stipend, stipends are down by $7,000, and that the conventions, FCM, USM, $6,200 in the goods, so we've got a saving there of about $13,000, just from council. Is there anything that'll be spent, maybe this UNSM meeting will take some of that, do you know? This would be on expenses, because it was $7,000 for council expenses and stipends, they're down by roughly $7,000. Then the convention, USM, FCM are down by 6278. So that's a saving of about $13,000. So UNSM will take, bite out a chunk out of that when we go to USM, whoever is going.
Yes.
But that, is that a usual number we would see?
Again, that's timing, right?
But the stipends of $7,000 seems to be half of the year, I guess it's really good.
I can, I'll address, there are two separate pieces, so the first piece is around the legislative piece, which is the stipend and other expenses.
Yes.
So some of the, the stipend, the stipend expenses, expenses being lower than budgeted, there was a period of time where there was a vacancy.
Oh, yes.
And that was the reason, part of the reason.
Yes.
So, so that would typically be bang on, right?
Yes, that's why I wondered when I saw that, I forgot.
Right, but there are other, there are other expenses here that are lower than budget, which is computer-related costs and, and council expenses themselves, that might be travel, or, now, some of that might be, you know, travel expenses that haven't been posted yet, that might be the case. But, but, but it, it appears to be ahead, ahead of, of budget, right? So, so it's, it's below what we expected, for sure. The USM, as you suspected, that number will, will increase when the USM conference occurs next week, but I still expect that number to be below budget.
Below budget, that's good.
Yeah, because the FCM, we had, excuse me, we had presumed or budgeted participation at the FCM, and this year, there were no participation, there were no participants from the Municipality of Argyle.
Money wasn't spent, okay.
It wasn't spent, it was budgeted, because at the time, we didn't know. But, but it was, there was no expense there at all. So, and then so of course, the USM, we make certain assumptions around participation, and I think, I think the actual participation is lower, so I expect to save money there.
And one more, just one more quick thing, I've, I've noticed that the newsletter, we're 3279 below what we usually spend, is this a timing issue, do you think?
It's a timing issue.
Okay, because I wondered, that newsletter is important, that people get that?
Oh, yeah.
I wonder if we're cutting back, or what was...
No, no, we have absolutely not cut back on the newsletter, we get extremely good feedback on the newsletter.
Oh, I hear a lot.
And so, so it is really, you know, I mean, we have Facebook and, but I mean, not everybody's on the computer, like it is, this is definitely a document that everybody gets at their home. And so we try our best to, to make that thing useful, readable, meaningful, right? So, and I think we get good feedback there, and we have attached, like we've put additional information, like I think the last one had an insert, I can't recall what it was, but...
Bi-local.
Pardon, bi-local, it was the bi-local insert.
Yes, right on.
That's right, thanks, Chris. So, so that's simply a bill that we haven't received, it hasn't been posted. I fully expect to spend what's budgeted there, and there will be four newsletters this year.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Saret, anybody else? Okay. Having a motion to accept the report. I'll show, second. Okay, move by Warden Dalton, I'll second it by Mr. Yannick Blan, I'd say. All those in favor? Contrary? Okay, carried. We'll move on to number five, other business and for decisions. 5A, Declaration of Cooperation for the REN. Okay, REN 1, I guess, where, where REN 1, is that right? Okay, so REN 1 is Municipality of Argyle, Municipality District of Clare, Municipality District of Digby, Town of Digby, Municipality District of Yarmouth, and the Town of Yarmouth. So, so the purpose of this declaration, I guess I'll, I'll let CAO Muse explain it better than I can.
So there's, there's really two reasons why we'd be interested in signing this. Number one, we're interested in the REN. I mean, we've, we've already made that decision, and we said, basically, subject to the intermunicipal agreement being satisfactory to us, we're basically, we're in on this, on this thing called regional economic development. So the reason why we would have a Declaration of Cooperation is, this document doesn't bind us to a legal agreement, all right? It basically identifies what our intentions are in terms of, of working collaboratively in a region. Why is that important? Well, the province has said that they want to, they have money up to $100,000 per REN to assist in startup costs. And what we're finding with the REN is that it's, it's, it's a, it's a fairly complex organization, there's a lot of work involved in terms of actually engaging the right people at the board, and then at that point, hiring the right people to, to make this thing work as, as well as it can under, under the right conditions. So the province has committed, because they saw the RENS weren't getting started as quickly as they thought they would, they've committed money to help us actually start up. So that might mean hiring a recruitment firm for, for engaging your board of directors, it might be recruiting that same firm to, to hire your CEO, all those things that you need to do right the first time in order to get it moving, right? So they've committed money, but they say, "Well, it's, this is a 50-50 deal, so you've got to kind of come on board as well." So what we envision is that we wouldn't really need much more than $40,000, or $80,000 total, okay? So, so our portion of $40,000 would be what our cost of REN would be for this current year, and that's why I'm saying it's probably between $6,000 and $8,000. That would be at the highest number. I personally don't think it's going to cost $80,000 to do what needs to be done, it'll probably cost 30 to 40. So, you know, realistically, our portion would be 2, 3, 4,000, okay? I think it's a critical step, because if, if we don't do this, it will take us longer, and we'll be, we'll, we'll have, I guess, six or seven municipal units trying to, trying to put this thing together, right? And that's, that's always difficult. It's better if you have an independent expert come in and assist you in that process. So the Declaration of Cooperation is, if we all sign it, which we have a meeting on November 1st in Digby, if we all sign it, we can then submit that to the province and start the ball rolling to get this REN up and, up and going. Ideally, this thing would be moving in a, that we would be hired... Ideally, this thing would be moving in a, that we would be hired, that we would hire the CEO by April 1. That would be our ideal timeframe at this, at this point. And Lucien and Aldrick have been engaged in that process with the meetings throughout, and including myself, of course. And I guess that's, I guess that's it.
So, you're, you're looking for a motion to, I guess, for the Declaration of Cooperation from, from us, from Argyle?
I think a motion is, is, gives, gives either Lucien or Aldrick the ability to sign it and know that they're representing you. So, yeah, a motion would be great.
Okay. Councilor Soret?
I have a few questions. Did you say that this, Alaa, did you say that this agreement does not bind us to any cost?
It, it doesn't bind us to the intermunicipal agreement.
Oh, to the, no, 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 to the intermunicipal agreement.
Right, so it doesn't bind us as a, as a partner in the REN. But what it does is it commits us financially to our portion of the startup cost. I mean, we have already indicated that we want to be part of the REN, that we're going to be more than likely signing the intermunicipal agreement. So, this is kind of like, it's, it's, it's kind of a pre-agreement agreement? If, if you know what I mean?
Yeah. The, the, probably the part that concerns me, and I, council to discuss it, or maybe they're not concerned about it, I see maybe a little different, maybe I need some explanation, is it's, there's, 20% of the cost is divided among the six units. Then 40% of the proportionate share of the total assessment is divided in the sixth unit, then 40% of the proportional share of population is divided into the six units. So, therefore, that, that means that there's a, there's a cost there. So, if we're signing something and it's giving us these, these numbers, do we know what those numbers, or what that cost is going to be? Is that like, if it's $100,000, well, we are paying, we have to pay 20% for all units have to share in that, 20% of that, then 40% on the assessment, then 40% on the, the share of population? So, where would that put our lot? Because if we're signing something and we don't know what we're signing as far as a cost, we shouldn't sign something before we know what the price is going to be?
Right.
Really? That's how I see it.
I can give you that information. Let me just, let me just open up a document here so that I know...
This is not binding.
This...
It's, it's, well, we're...
No.
It's, it's not binding, why does it say that then?
I'll, I'll, I'll explain, let, let me get into some of the detail there. So, so, I just want to be clear, like, the, the municipal units, the way that they fund the REN, or that they will fund the REN moving forward, is that, like, they, they will all share in 50% of the REN cost, okay? So, let's say the REN is 500,000, which it, it could be, okay? It's probably, it'll be that or even a little more, okay? So, we'll use that as an even number. So, $250,000 would be the municipal portion. Provincial would pay 250. So, then, that 250 would be divided amongst the six partners. And so, that division is calculated 20%, so 20% would be an equal division of that, right? So, so you basically take 250 divided by six, that's an even number. And then, you take 20% of that number, and that's, and that's like the first part. And then, the second part is, okay, 40% of that calculation is going to be based on division of population, and then, 40% is division of assessment. So, this, that equation has been agreed upon by all the municipal units at the table of the REN. So, so from our perspective, whatever the equation was, it didn't change our number very much, okay?
From when we previously were funding the RDA, or...
No, no, just like, 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 let's say, let's say one calculation made us pay 45,000, the other calculation paid us, made us pay 46,000, and the other one was 44,000. Like, we were basically, it didn't have a lot of impact. It had a lot of impact on the Town of Digby and a lot of impact on the municipality of Yarmouth, because it was the lowest and the highest.
That's right.
Okay, good. So, so from our perspective, this does not bind you to join the REN. However, it does in some, it does, you are in fact making a commitment...
Yes.
...financially for up to your portion of $40,000, okay? Now, you've already budgeted. Keep in mind, like, that is nowhere near what you budgeted, right?
I see, yeah, yeah.
But if, if your number, based on what I see, the number for Argyle, the highest number would be $7,465 for this current year.
Yeah, this is just this year, yeah.
So, that would be our portion, assuming it would cost $80,000 to do the job. Well, what I'm saying is, it's not going to cost that. It's going to cost between 30 and 40. So, your portion of that was, is going to be probably half. So, half of 7,400 is 36, 3700. So, you are in fact committing to that amount of money in order to, to get the people engaged, hired, to, to do the work to get, to get the REN underway, okay? So, but, you could spend that money and then be done, right? You could say, you could say, "Look, we don't like the way this is going, we're out of the, we're out of the REN, we're out of the intermunicipal agreement, we're not signing the intermunicipal agreement." It doesn't bind you to that, but it does commit you financially...
To 2014.
To, to, to the, to the end of March of this fiscal year now. So, that's between 3,500 and 7,000, and then, we budgeted, we budgeted 37,500 for the year.
It's right in our budget, yeah.
Exactly. So, so it is within, definitely within the budget. But I, I'm glad you asked that question, because I wasn't clear, okay? So, I just, I wanted...
And I guess, and I'm glad also to hear that we're not binding down, because by the end of March 2014, let's say we look at it and we say, it's going to cost now to move then to the next step of the REN that will be involved financially a lot more, is going to cost us, I'm just going to throw a number, $100,000, we can still say, no, okay, this is too much money for Argyle.
Right.
Or, we could say, yeah, that's less than we were paying before. Yes, we're in it. It just brings us to the end of March of 2014.
I, I can tell you today what I think the REN's going to cost you for the next five years, if you're going to sign. And it's going to be between the, between 45 and 49,000 per year. That's what it's going to cost municipality of Argyle.
Thank you very much.
So, and it will be solid, and you'll know what that number is every year. The only decision to make is how much each of the municipal units are willing to match provincially. We have $290,000 available to us provincially, but I don't think that we will match that. It will be lower to try to manage our costs. And it's a shame in some way, because we can't, because we're, we're leaving some money on the table that we can't match. But we don't have all the partners that we were supposed to have initially. Had we had the seven partners, I think it would have been 290, and it would have cost us probably the same amount that I'm telling you, right? But because we lost a partner, you know, we're dealing with less. So, some, everybody else had to pick up a piece, right?
Thank you, very good.
Okay, any other questions? I guess we have a motion on the floor. It was moved by, if I remember correctly, Councilor LeBlanc and seconded by Councilor Book. All those in favor? Seems like I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Move on to 5B, which is the Tuscat wastewater system upgrade budget. And I do believe we've got, was a tender that was opened on October 24th. And in attendance were LMU, CAO, Danny Muse, Counselor John Sullivan, Director of Property Inspection, Carol LeBlanc. And I guess we have, had one tender that was received. It was from Garian Construction Limited. And I guess I'll just let you fill in the rest, CA Muse?
Excuse me, thank you. The original, excuse me, the original budget was for $44,000 to do this job. We had one, one bidder. And his bid was below budget, but we're, we're thinking that with the engineering, that it will be higher than budget, by the time the engineering comes in. So, I'm actually fairly confident that the, that the number will be in or around the $50,000 mark as opposed to 44. We're asking for a little bit more room, just to be, because we don't want to come back and ask again. We fully expect it to be ended at around the 50,000 mark, but we're asking council to approve the total cost at 55,000. As you know, 22,000, we had already confirmed from PCAP. The difference will come from gas tax. It's a required improvement to our, our sewer. It actually, it, for Danny, who is also on our MCAP committee, the, the, with, with increasing rain and, and increasing events with global warming and some of the climate change issues, this work will actually accommodate some of that extra flow, and will deal with it better than what is being dealt with now. So, in some ways, it is, it is considered to be an improvement in anticipation of, of future rain events. But we already have had rain events where it's caused, you know, that it had the potential to cause a problem. So, I recommend that we, we move ahead with this project at the slightly increased cost over budget. The budget number that I had presented in the capital reserve budget was, was an estimate at the time, so, so it was fairly close. So, I'd like, like council to, to A, approve Garian Construction, and B, approve the increased budget number to, to make this happen.
What's one more?
Seconded.
Okay, so, move by Councilor Soret, seconded by Councilor LeBlanc, to accept Garian Construction Limited as the successful bidder and to raise the, the amount to, which, what was the amount you said?
55.
55,000, okay? No questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Move on to 5C, which is Leading Edge Geomatics, LiDAR mapping, attachment with nine pages. I guess I'll let you handle this one too, CA Muse?
There's, there's a fairly detailed report that has, has been attached. And we get these opportunities, probably not every year, but probably once every three years, where I think probably four or five years ago, we had ortho photo maps that we purchased. Some of you would recall that. And so, we did that over a multi-year period of time, and, and we're still actually using it. The LiDAR mapping is a, is a much higher level of, of detail around, around computer mapping. So, what they do, essentially, the company that does this, is they fly over your community and they identify areas of, of concern. So, this particular company, Leading Edge Geomatics, had spoken to Brad Fulton before actually doing a flyby, asking, you know, what, what may have been the higher-risk areas or areas of greatest concern for the municipality. And he had identified that the Quinnen, Quinnen flooding area and the, the Tuscat Dam area had, had received some, some considerable attention over the past couple of years. So, they actually did a flyby and had priced what the LiDAR mapping would, would cost us, if we were interested in that information for that location. And the cost was $3,500. The second cost that they have quoted was before October 30th, I guess that's the early bird draw or something. I don't know exactly why it's cost more after the 30th. Actually, I think it's because they're doing a flyby, but anyway, I tried, tried to be funny, it didn't work. The, before October 30th, to acquire the Argyle additional area, and is 16,500. So, that, that area includes Wetport and Pabniko. So, my understanding is that, is that the 16.5 price does not include the previously flown data for Argyle. So, if you wanted all of it, I, my understanding was, was that, that it would cost you 19.5. I spoke with Brad Fulton, Senior Planner, about this, and first of all, I think the opportunity, this won't be the last opportunity that we have to, to purchase this. I'll say that. And we do have other alternative information, alternate information, perhaps not as accurate as LiDAR, but we do have additional information. Brad certainly recommended that you would do at least the higher-risk areas, which is a cost of 3,000, sorry, I said 3,500, the cost is 3,000.
3,000.
He had recommended that at a minimum. And, and I have a tendency to agree with that, because it's, I think it would give us very, very important information around some of the flooding areas in, in Quinnen. It might give us very useful information regarding that. Now, I mean, if that's not a priority of council, it's certainly, we can just certainly move past it. I, I'm not sure that I would recommend the full, the full purchase at this time. You could do that, and it would, and, and it would be very useful information. I'm not, you know, just suggesting that, you know, the usefulness of the, of the, the higher-risk areas would be definite. The usefulness of the other areas would be, would be, we would definitely use it, and it would definitely be useful to us. But I think we'll have another opportunity if you're not, if you're not interested in that at this time.
Maybe if we went with a lesser, just a basic, and we could...
Have a, have it in the budget in, in the coming year, or...
Yeah. And that's my other concern. That's my other concern, that we don't have this budgeted, and it's a fairly large number, right?
If we decided to go with it, we could budget, budget for it.
The other advantage of just doing the smaller piece is that you would actually be able to, to take that information and, and, and use it and, and assess its value, right? Rather than buy something for 19,000 and say, "Well, it was okay," right? I, I think you would get a use out of the smaller piece. It is probably a worthwhile investment.
Whereas more urgent do?
And certainly, yeah.
Quinnen.
Quinnen and in the, and in the...
Tuscat River.
Tuscat River area.
Councilor Soret?
Do you know if Brad or Jeanine has identified the Tittle Road, where we've got two marshes that the flood, you know, especially if the wind's coming from the, from the southwest and generally the higher tides, they do flood over. And although there is, the marshes up a bit, or the road on the marsh, I should say, we're still having every month some, you know, some plate that they can't cross for a couple of hours. So, I just wondering if the, if that had ever been identified or not? You know, I mean, you probably can't answer that, we'd have to talk to Brad about that.
Well, I, I know that, that Jeanine has been focused on Quinnen and Suret's Island Bridge. Those have been her focuses this year in terms of having specialized planning. In terms of LiDAR, it has not been identified. And so, all the more reason, perhaps, instead of investing in, in, you know, in perhaps just saying, you know, Wetport and Pabniko, maybe we want a more in-depth analysis of what we actually want to achieve with this information, and then identify the locations that are best served, right? I mean, they chose Pabniko and Wetport primarily because they're coastal and they're probably, you know, higher in population, and they probably made assumptions around the fact that, that we would require that, seeing as we had the orthophotos for, for Wetport and Pabniko and, and Tuscat. So, it stands to reason that we might be interested in the LiDAR for the same location. So, LiDAR in terms of Tittle, no, it hasn't been identified, and, but it could. Yeah.
Councilor Muse?
Just wondering, the area previously flown for 3,000, what area does that cover? Like, is it, is it Pabniko, is it, it's not those areas at all? Like, Quinnen? Did they, did they, that's the only ones that they've done in Argyle, like, so far?
Yes.
In hopes that we were looking for it? Is that it? I mean, why did they do it?
I think they had, excuse me, I think this company had also, had done some work for the town. And so, I think they kind of identified certain areas that they would, and they may have previously flown other areas as well, we don't know. But what they're saying in terms of the price is they've actually, they have a picture, they identify the project area on page five of their report. They identify, it looks like, it looks like most of Tuscat and Tuscat Falls. And then, it also has Quinnen and South Quinnen identified.
I see it here, yeah.
Yeah, right in the, yeah, so that's the previously flown data. They may have done others, but that's the one they're looking to sell for three grand.
I mean, for, as far as the MCAP, definitely something like that would be useful for, it would have been useful to have when we were doing our, our work for MCAP as well, identifying areas. I mean, you can, you can look and, and say that, yeah, that's a high, that's high ground, but sometimes you're not sure, you're kind of guessing that that would have given you, because this LiDAR is very, very accurate as far as, yeah. You're, you're kind of guessing that that would have given you, because this LiDAR is very, very accurate as far as, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, we've been, we've been presented this and we do have, it's a recommendation or, or from our senior planner that it would be a good ideal to, to purchase the, I guess, the Quinnen area and the, the Tuscat Falls area. Somebody care to make a motion or? Counselor Soret?
Since it's not in the budget and it's, if it's not a necessary, necessary thing, why spend the money? It's never been identified before. If it's put in the budget, if it's put in our next budget, can we purchase that in our next budget? Or, or they're flying by and doing the, the thing now, I think by the end of October? Or can we put it on next year's budget and, and purchase that?
My, my understanding is that, is that the purchase for the previously flown, certainly the, certainly the amount that hasn't been flown, it's one of those, you have to kind of reserve it now or, or, or else it won't, won't occur. It's not to say that we won't have these opportunities in the future. And we could properly budget for probably a larger project. Now, I can't say this with absolute certainty, but my understanding is, is that the opportunity exists now. It makes, I, I, I don't know that, I mean, if they've previously flown it, logically, they might be able to sell that later rather than now. So, but I, I don't have a, a solid answer to that question. I don't think the, the report actually addresses that either. I'm just gonna check it to make sure.
It doesn't.
Counsel doesn't seem to have an appetite for acquiring this at this time. No lights are on and, so maybe we'll, we'll move on to, to next item?
Sure.
Number five D, which is growing community scholarship. And that's an attachment with four pages. And I think Counsel Soret, you're on that committee, are you?
Yes, I am.
And you have something to tell us about it?
Yes, sure, if the CAO is okay with that. Is that all right with you?
Go ahead.
Our, our growing scholarship for the municipality of Argyle is something we've had now for, I believe, four years. And it gives out $1,000 to a student in Drumlin or a student in, in Parabah. And we've, in the last couple of years, two years ago, we only gave out a $1,000 scholarship because there was only one application. And last year, we didn't give out any because nobody qualified or nobody applied. So, we was brought to council here, oh, maybe a couple of months ago, or three, two or four months ago, actually, that we, maybe we look at the criteria and bring it to council, see what they thought about it. And then council decided that, why not get the committee to, to make some recommendations and, and, and council will look at it. And what, what we've, we've met, there's myself, Ben LaRondeur, Natalie and Carol LeBlanc, that was, they're on the committee. And what we've decided to do along with consultation of the principal of Parabah and Drumlin, their consultation was to change, like I said, change a few things on the criteria and feel for more that if we think here, whether you live in the municipality of Argyle or not, which was a concern that some of the councils had, but as long as you're going to one of the two schools, you could apply. Before, you had to live in Argyle. So, we've, the committee went with that to change it, that even if you're not living in the municipality of Argyle, but you're going to one of our schools, then therefore you could apply on, for the scholarship. The other thing we have, we had a 500-word essay. And the principal said that was really drawing some of the students, believe it or not, they didn't want to make the essay. It seemed, seemed simple to me, but I guess they, they've noticed that on a lot of scholarships that the students don't, they seem kind of jeanne or, or they don't want to, to put that in writing. So, I guess it's the, the, the principals and, and their tight encounters said, "You shouldn't have that in there." So, we, we dropped that off. We also have, in this recommendation, that it would be the teachers and the principal that bring us the names. So, it is not the committee that gets, picks names from, from, from the schools. The teachers and, and the principal would bring us these names. But we will go into both schools, the committee, and do interviews with each and every one. So, therefore, there's some accountability from the students. And some of the questions, which as you've seen probably on the, on the email that has been sent out, the question that we'll be asking, it's not something that's rocket science, but, you know, what community college are you planning to go to? Are you planning to stay in Argyle? Which is, well, we're hoping some of these people go to one of our community colleges, they may come back and stay in Argyle. And, you know, like I said, what are your future career plans and stuff like that? And that's basically the main, the main things that we've changed on there. So, you've all received this, these recommendations. I'm sure you've read them. So, if there's any discussion, I can answer anything.
Counselor Muse. I have a, I have a bit of a concern that with this, we are leaving out community in Argyle that Drumlin or Parabah is not their school. They end up in, in high school in Yarmouth. And they're not given a chance to apply for these scholarships. And I'm just wondering if there was any way that that could be incorporated, that, that, that if you're from Argyle and you're going to another school, that, that they can be, that they could at least apply? Because i- i- in this, in what I see here, we are offering it to the school for students that may or may not be from Argyle or actually they can qualify if they're not from Argyle. And yet, we're, we're, we're not giving the opportunity to some of the students that are from Argyle who, it's not their choice that they don't come to this school, that's not their school district, right? So, that would be my concern there, that if how, if there was any way that we could include these students that, 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 that are in a different school than what, what we're offering here. I'm not sure how that could work because usually scholarships are given at the school. But whether we, we throw another one in there, I don't know. But anyway, it's just my concern.
Counsel Albrecht.
I have two concerns as well. I think the scholarship is a really, it's an awesome idea. But I think, when I read this, I thought, if we leave the decision up to the school administration and staff, being, being a teacher, I've worked on a committee at the elementary level. And sometimes what happens is the, the better students or the students who qualify for these, like, let's say your son was going to school and he would qualify for lots of prizes. Sometimes what tends to happen is they will say, "Oh, well, they're getting already this and they're going to probably get this award and they're probably going to get this award." So, sometimes they'll give it to somebody else who isn't necessarily the most qualified, but they're trying to spread the wealth. And I just feel like when you get to grade 12 and you've worked hard, right? And you deserve a scholarship, it shouldn't matter how many other prizes you're going to get. You should get the scholarship if you meet the requirements. And I'm just afraid that if it's left up to administration and teachers, they may try to kind of spread the wealth and I understand what they're trying to do. But in the same time, I feel like if you're really deserving of that scholarship, you should probably get that scholarship. And I don't think we should take away the essay. I really don't. But I like this. Maybe this should be offered as guidelines as to what you should write in your essay. Because were there any guidelines before for the essay or was it just write an essay?
No, there were some guidelines.
There were, okay. Because I think if there are guidelines that would help in the essay, I think it's an easy road to say, "No, forget about the essay." And I think replacing it with an interview is, is a little harsher because some students, and I was talking to the guidance counselor from one of the local schools, and she actually said that an interview process for a trades school may deter some people from applying for it whatsoever. And she, I also, she said that her role and part of her role, it's, it's telling students, "If you want the money, you have to work for it." And she really encourages the essay writing. And they, actually, some people, they have to give two reference letters. So, I mean, I think we should, I really think, if you want $1,000 towards your education, writing, I mean, I can write a 500-word essay on the clouds. Like, if it's your career, you should be able to write 500 words as to why you want it.
We've all, we all talked about it at the, at the committee level and apparently the principal said it was a, they felt it was a deterrent.
But we, you know, I think we're just making it too easy to just say, "Forget about it." If you offer like even some of these guiding questions, you know, write about this, what you're asking in your interview, tell us about these things in your essay, maybe that would lead those applicants to have a better idea to, because sometimes when you're a grade 12 student and, you know, write an essay, you're not really sure, you're thinking, "What do they want? What do they want?" Right? But if you have guiding questions. Right, that would, that may help. And I think too, I asked about last year and, and, you know, nobody, nobody applied or nobody qualified. There was an applicant, she said, but the applicant was a kilometer outside the municipality of Argyle. And that is why the applicant didn't apply, he didn't qualify for this, this scholarship. And she said that he was very deserved, would have been very deserving and could have really used this scholarship. So, I think it's a good idea to broaden. We have people who are coming into our school. They may not be residents of the municipality of Argyle, but they're residents of the community in that school in our municipality for the four years that they're there. So, I kind of look at it that way too. And I mean, that's really close, right? You think we, we lost out on giving that scholarship to a deserving student over a kilometer outside our municipality.
And I, and I guess, I guess really if you're giving, if you're giving a scholarship or two scholarships out, I mean, this is where the guidelines work, because we want to give it to somebody in the municipality. We don't want to be passing. You know, that was the idea of giving it out to different other areas in Barrington or, or in Halifax. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But I get, yeah, you have a good point.
But they're, they're still in our community during their schooling years. I guess if we look at it that way, right? That's kind of how I see it.
That's a good point.
I just think, you know, I, I don't know, I'm not, I, I think you should still keep the decision to the committee. That's my opinion. I don't think it should fall on the teachers and the administration shoulders. I think it really should come down to looking at, I think, this is me. I think the essay should still be part of it. I think that that should be reviewed by the committee and I think it should be based on the qualifications you said about. Because I, I'm afraid that it may fall on, you know, "Well, they're getting so much already." And, and I mean, fair isn't always equal, right?
That's right.
That's just my two cents worth, thank you.
Okay, yeah, 500-word essay, a thousand bucks, that's $2 a word, right? Isn't it?
Really, 500 words is not.
Yeah. Counselor LeBlanc.
I have absolutely nothing to say, basically, I'm sure Nicole, Nicole, that just went under a spiel. I guess I, I echo everything Nicole says, or Counsel Albrecht, sorry. Again, I was taught from young age, hard work gets you end product and results. Taking away the essays is ridiculous. I, I do understand there's been a steady decline in applications and whatnot, but there's got to be a better way to promote this and to make it a giveaway. This, this is, again, this is taxpayers' money, it, it's a scholarship, it's an opportunity. Advertise it more and, and maybe tweak the rules a little bit to, maybe just like Counsel Albrecht said, just let them know what you want and I think it'll entice them to write a 500-word essay, which they can do in two hours. It's, I, I wouldn't support these changes.
All right.
I, from what I'm getting, why don't I bring this back to the committee? And then we'll come back to council because council has to approve it. And this is good, I'm glad you, you spoke, you, you know, your piece on it and, and there's not wrong with what you said. I'll bring this back to the committee and, and our next meeting, we should have something back for you and then we'll have, have a look at it. Thank you for, for your input.
Great, thank you, Counsel Soret. We'll move on to the next one, five E, surplus property, Spring Haven. You've got an attachment?
We don't want it.
Counselor CA Muse, you have anything to add to this?
I, we don't want it.
We're not interested in buying that.
No, no, this, basically, this is an old road that isn't a road anymore. And the province is just going through their processes and the process is to offer it to us first. That's the, the surplus property, property process. They also indicate here that an adjoining landowner has requested to purchase the property. If we have absolutely no interest in this property, we should just let it go and allow that to go to private owner. That's my recommendation.
Need a motion on that?
You, yeah, I think, I mean, it's a, it's a motion not to do something, but perhaps a, 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 a motion to, to, maybe the motion should say to indicate to transportation infrastructure renewal that we will not be pursuing.
Move by, move by Counselor Murphy, seconded by Counsel Book. All those in favor, things I've seen, aye? Contrary? Okay, carried. We'll move on to number six, which is correspondence and for information, which we have nothing. So, we'll move on to financial requests, district committee grants. First one is Wedge Haven Senior Apartments. I think we entertained that one last meeting, but the counselor in that district, Counsel LeBlanc, was not around, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this, yeah, go ahead.
The letters are slightly unclear, but they're, they're a group of seniors who, who gather in the Wedge Haven seniors apartment to play cards and it's a social activity group that meets weekly. And they're, they're looking for, they're looking for a grants organization of, requested of $500 to purchase furniture for their, their group.
Okay, Counsel Soret.
Counsel LeBlanc, would that be, would that be the responsibility of a housing authority? Or do, or do you, do you know, like?
Yes and no. It's the housing authority's responsibility to furnish, it's the housing authority's responsibility to furnish Wedge Haven apartments for the residents, for the people living there. They meet regularly, this group, to play cards, not just the residents there, it's an organi, it's a group that meets to socialize basically. And given the fact that, I didn't consider it being an issue, given the fact that we bought cots for a fire hall because people are meeting in the fire hall. It's not for the firemen, it's, it's for the organizations meeting in the fire hall type thing. I, I kind of considered it to fall under the same, same concept. So, that's why I felt like there was no issues there.
Okay, CA Muse.
Just a question on who this would be payable to? This is, would it be?
I was informed the money could be, because Wedge Haven is, or sorry, Western Housing Authority is proprietor of the building, the money could be funneled through them for this organization, given the fact they don't have a bank account.
Counsel Soret.
So, you see, I'm not picking on you, but I just wanted to be sure. So, does this meet a cri, a criteria? To a, to a authority like that?
Well, it would be a nonprofit org, I mean, it's a nonprofit organization. So, so we'll meet that criteria. It is, it is purposed for a purchase of a, of a product or, or, you know, a one-time item. There, if, as long as it goes to a nonprofit organization and, and that it's for a purpose that they've requested, that's not inconsistent with the policy, I, I think it does meet.
It's in Argyle.
And, yes, absolutely. I mean, the organization itself, you know, you, is, is located everywhere, including there. But I mean, I think it's for that particular location, so it seems to qualify.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Muse.
Who is the organization? Like, Wedge Haven is the home, is that correct? That's the name of the home? So, what is the organization? Who, who would the check be made out to? That's my question, I guess. To, to an individual?
No, we just said, you can funnel the money, there's, I already looked into it. There's no issue with funneling the money through Western Housing Authority for the group that meets in this building.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're sort of, they're an organization of, of seniors that gather there weekly. It's, it's sort of unofficial, I guess, if you think about it. But I didn't think we were going to dwell so much on the authenticity of the organization. I'll make the motion.
So, move by Counsel LeBlanc and seconded by Counsel Donaldson. So moved by councillor LeBlanc and seconded by councillor Donaldson, all those in favor? Contrary? Carried. Okay, move on to the next one, Committee de Cartes de Wedgeport. And that one either belongs to, I would say that's another, this here one, there you go.
Again, uh, the requested amount is five hundred dollars for the Committee de Cartes, the, from the Saint Michael's Parish in Wedgeport. The request is five hundred dollars and I'll make a motion that we approve the grants to organizations for five hundred dollars.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Contrary? Carried. Number three, the Jardin des Petits.
Uh, this, this item, yeah, I'll just give a little explanation. Uh, we have a motion that's inconsistent with a pay, with a dispersment, so I, uh, it's, it's just a cleanup that needs to happen. So the Jardin des Petits, uh, I guess in the original letter didn't, wasn't indicating the amount. And so we had approved two fifty, uh, but in fact, it was five hundred. So it requires a motion to sit, to amend the original motion for two fifty to five hundred, I've, and I've spoken with.
Yeah, also also move that, we increased that, like, we have approved two fifty and then I got, I gotta thank you for the five hundred that they got.
It was a little bit of an imbalance. Didn't reconcile.
I spoke and I'm willing to, it comes out of mine, so that's fine, I'm willing to, to, we're not gonna go back and ask for two fifty.
So moved by councillor Muse and seconded by councillor Book, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, Kempville District Volunteer Fire Department. That one must be us.
That's mine, yes. That's a request that they've had, they, they had a car fire in, in the parking lot and it's uh, contaminated the well. And there's cleanup to be done and they've asked for five hundred, they figure it's gonna cost about seven hundred dollars to, to do the repairs. And they've asked for five hundred, so I would move that we, that we give five hundred to, to the fire department.
Okay, moved by councillor Muse, seconded by councillor Serret, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, East Side Committee Center, that is councillor Book.
There, we're renovating the bathrooms, we did get a grant from the province. But I guess, as you all know, when you start renovations, it goes over, so we have to fund, they have to fundraise. So I'm making a motion to give the East Side Committee Center five hundred dollars to help them out.
Okay, moved by councillor Book, consecutively by councillor Murphy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. All right, number eight, notice of motion by councillors. None? Okay. Number nine is question period. Are questions from the media, from general public? Nope. Okay, number ten, in camera. All right, so we have to
Move the recess and go in camera.
Okay, moved.